Portage County Board of Supervisors meeting, recorded November 1st, 2022.
Is virtual and Supervisor Soick is excused.
Pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by Supervisor Honnall.
Let us pray each to his or her own higher power. For an end to the waste and desecration of the earth. For access to the fruits of creation to be shared equally among all people. And for communities and nations to find sustenance in the fruits of the earth and the water given us. The world was given into our care so that it might serve all people. Inspire us to use the riches of creation with wisdom and to ensure that their blessings are shared by all. And that trusting in each other, all people may be empowered to seek freedom from poverty, famine, and oppression. Amen.
2023 Budget Public Hearing. Mike, do you still have the list going around for? Anybody with the public that would like to speak on the budget? We will go down the list. I'll remind you that there are, there are three minutes. And because we have a few people, if you just agree with something somebody else has already said, just say, I agree with them. You can't pass your time on to someone else. And we ask everybody to be respectful. If not, I will stop you and remind you to be respectful. Speak to the chair, direct your comments to me. Is there anyone online as well that would like to speak about the budget? All right, go ahead and call these off. Ray, I think you're up first.
Thank you. So I'm aware that the board received a last middle objection from the Wisconsin Manufacturer and Commerce and two large special interest dairy groups. I don't know if you guys have had time to read this. It's absolute bunk, start to finish. They make a total, they make a huge number of claims regarding the nitrate pollution around the village in Nelsonville. They also appear to be legally threatening the county. And I want you to know that they tried this, these same groups tried this exact same tact in Wood County. It failed in Wood County. They have no legal standing to threaten the county or any individual. And the amount of misinformation in that memo is staggering. I would hope the board would just dismiss this outright, or at least table it until there's time to go through and fact check it, you know, submitting it, you know, immediately before a budget meeting like this just seems highly suspect to me. They're out and out wrong on the expenditure that the monitoring will not lead to measures that protect public health. It's exactly what monitoring is designed to do. And we're looking, what, you know, the role of monitoring is to look to see if there is safe water beneath Nelsonville, either at depth or at very shallow levels. And this is something the county is charged under state statute to do, under statute 92. Reverse osmosis units, as the county exec, chair, the DNR have all said, is a Band-Aid approach. And to suggest that somehow the residents of Nelsonville are turning down RO systems is just patently false. The recharge zone for Nelsonville is roughly 800 acres. So when I read today that 95% of it is in alfalfa or forest, look, I'm a geoscientist who grew up here. Don't tell me that it's alfalfa and forest. It's just inaccurate, guys. I find it beyond suspect that these for-profit special interest groups are interfering in our county decisions. But I'm really here to speak on behalf of Supervisor Weaver's amendment. We spent about 20,000 bucks on REI, an external firm, to come in and develop a work plan for how to deal with the nitrate issues in the village of Nelsonville. They suggested monitoring wells. We handed it over to our water quality specialist in planning and zoning. She also came up with the same thing. She refined the plan. That plan has been approved by the Law Con Committee. And what I would urge all of you to do this evening is to do what's pretty standard approach in this county, is to approve this amendment in the county budget. If ARPA funding comes through, then it's paid for. If ARPA funding doesn't come through, we're sitting on $7 million in discretionary funds. We could certainly spend $240,000 to protect the drinking water for a village within the county. Thank you.
Kyle Gordon?
Oh, I'm the owner of Gordondale Farms. We're the ones that own and operate in the recharge zone. I only have three minutes. I wouldn't possibly know where to start, but this is a picture of the recharge zone. Every field in there is alfalfa ore. And this recharge zone was made by Ray himself.
Ray?
I can send everyone a picture. So anyway, this is a dynamic thing. I've already used up too much time. I got to skip right next to the page. I could dazzle you with all kinds of statistics. It's been going on, the bantering between agriculture and the village residents for a long time. I could tell you that, that there's five homes and one acre. At 20 pounds of end per person, that village is worse than a 100-year-old cornfield. There's, there's too many septic systems. By today's standards, you need two acres. There's five on one. We need to have continued testing. Eight or eight of the houses tested positive for septic tracers in November's testing. They're drinking each other's, you know what? The last 13 to 15 wells drilled are fine. The average is three. Matter of fact, Church, the last well to be drilled is .1. Granted, they're, they're going to say they're deeper, and you know what? They are deeper. The basic premise here is the older, shallower wells, they are worse. For example, in the first, and the first round of sampling was done four years ago. Only one well in the last 24 years is consistently high. So we've got to deal with all. As far as our farm goes, you're talking about a KFO the most highly regulated we can possibly be. And yes, we've planted alfalfa. We're putting zero, voluntarily zero nitrates into that recharge zone. We've replaced our septic. My son's replaced his. My brother's replaced his. That's doing your due diligence to replace your septics. We risked our business to put in the first anaerobic digester, mixed plug flow digester in North America. We've taken over 100,000 tons of methane out of the atmosphere, which spawned hundreds being built. You could make the argument that we've done more for the environment, atmosphere than any farm in the United States. Our carbon footprint per gallon of milk produced is among the best 1% in the world. I got to keep going faster. Keep up with me. Six farms around us have sold their cows, small farms. Guess what they're growing now? Corn. The reason we have dairy cows here, where we are in that area is we can grow alfalfa and we have good clean water. When we sell our cows, manure is our friend. We're only in the infancy of this if we're just going to allow grain production. If there was grain production around Nelsonville, a non-KFO around Nelsonville, vegetables around Nelsonville, it would be worse than what we're doing now. At least we have the ability to have a rotation that's negative to groundwater. Uh-oh, got another page, but I guess I'm, I'm done by the clock, huh? Can you please just let me say, we want clean water. The farm wants clean water. I honestly, I'm fine with monitoring wells. Go ahead. I just think 240,000 could be spent better. We know nitrates come from agriculture, fertilizer, manure, septic. We know where they come from.
Please, please wrap it up, Mr. Gordon.
Pull up our sleeves, get to work, and start, get a budget, and stop putting it in the ground. Instead of putting it in persecution wells.
Kim Kirkka?
Basically, my back, what Kyle said, he has done more than anybody in Portage County. He's the only state-regulated farm, like he told you. It's, I, as a taxpayer, and is adamantly against $240,000 coming out of the budget when it's already been asked for by ARPA funds, I don't even agree with the monitoring wells going in whatsoever, what so much that they're being fought for now. I, I'm worried about septic myself, living in the village. And I just wish you would just consider, take all the facts, and make an accurate decision. Thank you.
Josh Stolzenberg?
Thank you. My name is Josh Stolzenberg. I am the president of the Board of Trustees of Nelsonville. And I just wanted to make a couple of points. The, the village board passed a resolution asking the Land and Water Conservation Committee to accept the work plan from REI and to have staff implement that plan to install monitoring wells throughout the village so that we would be able to provide residents with the best information about, possible about where, and more importantly, at what depth they could find better water on their property. Whether they feel compelled to drill a new well for themselves, they need to, they need to per the terms of sale of a property, or because they're a business that provides drinking water to the public, this monitoring data would give them the best chance of finding clean water. Implicit in the Land and Water Conservation's vote to approve this work plan is that funding will be provided to implement it. We understand that the ARPA funds are an attractive place for the county to look for this funding, and we're absolutely not opposed to utilizing those funds. It's just that the timeframe for the decisions on applications for its use have been pushed back a couple of times already. And at present, there is only a possibility that, that will be awarded funds. Certainty is obviously preferable to the village residents. Passing this budget amendment would give us that certainty and likely move up the timeframe for implementation. And the sooner that we can start collecting that data from these wells, the better for our residents. So that is why I'm here to urge you to vote in favor of Supervisor Weaver's amendment. Thank you.
James Walker?
Good afternoon, I presume. My name is James Walker. I'm a resident of Nelsonville, have been so. My wife and I have lived in the, in the village for 17 years. When we moved into the village, our well water tested at 16.3 parts per million. And over the years, we have embraced the RO system that we lease from a local water provider. It is a system that requires proper maintenance in order for it to work properly. So we have dutifully used that system to control the, the polluted water that actually services our well. Over the years, our, the highest we have tested has been at 29 parts per million. The last test that we did in the beginning of October 2022, it was 22 parts per million. And it has fluctuated, I think, since we started testing in the 2018 system. It has been as low as 19 and as high as 29. So we, we support the monitoring wells so that we, should we need, and obviously we may need to, to drill a new well, at least have the resources to determine where the proper depth would be, that we would be able to attain clean drinking water. I think we are entitled to, to that, since this county has a responsibility for maintaining proper clean water. I have the utmost respect for those who are in the farming industry. I've always respected that particular vocational calling. I think those are very dedicated folks. But that doesn't mean that they're infallible and that the people that live around those, it's all about the practices that are employed. I don't think that anybody is intentionally polluting, but I think that the consequences of certain practices result in that happening. Unintentional as it may be, it's the same result. My well water is 29, 29 parts per million nitrate. And we have absolutely no septic interference and never have. If you know where our property is, you will see that there absolutely is no septic interference. And we have never had tests for septic contributions to our, our contamination. So I encourage you to consider the amendment to support those monitoring wells. Thank you very much.
Tor Anderson?
Thank you, board, for hearing my comments today. I would like to make specific comments refuting the claims made in the Ruland law and email and documents sent out for Venture and Dairy Alliance and WMC. I'd like to make specific statements about this, just that this document is full of lies and misdirection. They say that counties are not allowed to use monitoring wells. That's one of the statements that they said in there, that you're not allowed to. And actually, Wisconsin statutes mandate the creation of the LWCC, the Land and Water Conservation Committee. And the, the mandate is to protect the natural resources, including water. And it says right in this document, right in this code, state code, that they can employ these types of tools, such as monitoring wells. And that, that is, that is just simply untruthful for that document to state that the county cannot do that. They say that there's no evidence available that, that there's a problem with nitrates, and, and that's just a big lie. I've shared correspondence with the LWCC in today's meeting pack that shows how unassailable our testing program is. Our residential monitoring is bulletproof, unless you lie about it. From independent parties, county staff, and testing specialists from the university, choosing our 20 representative residential monitoring wells, to following lab instructions for sampling and providing chain of custody, and using a university lab, which is universally accepted by scientists, as being unsurpassed for their audited adherence to lab standards and the quality of testing. To say that, that there's no evidence is, is just completely unfactual. It's just a lie. If, speaking of lies, I guess if you're making half-truths, misleading statements that twist the facts by taking them out of context to paint some alternate scenario, then you're simply not telling the truth. This document that was sent out to the board is dripping with these falsehoods around every corner and clearly shows the authors and these organizations intentional deficit of integrity. Therefore, I ask this document to be removed from your consideration as a source of information on which to base your opinions. Please support Mr. Weaver's amendment to the budget. This is just a backup in case ARPA falls through. No county funds will be used if ARPA passes. So passing this amendment doesn't hurt the county at all. Another thing is that there are up, there are houses on the up gradient side of the village which have high contamination, high nitrates. There's no opportunity for septics to get into their wells. They're on the edge of town where there's no septics upgrading from them. So you know that it came from agriculture. So as a group, we don't want anyone to go out of business. We just want to protect our water. That's all. Thank you.
Katie Bailey?
Good evening. My name is Katie Bailey, and I've been a resident in the village of Nelsonville for 10 years. When my husband and I moved to our home in 2012, our nitrate levels were at seven parts per million. Today, they hover around 21 to 25 parts per million, depending on the time of year. We installed an RO system in February of 2019, which has failed us, which I will, will talk about. But I'd like to speak to you tonight about the health impacts. High nitrates are known to create thyroid disease. They're found in miscarriages, birth defects, and some, some cancers. So I'd like to start with, with my own personal story. Everyone in my family has hypothyroid, thyroidism after the past 10 years. And that's including my husband, myself, my son, and my dog. Since living in my home, I have lost three cats to rare forms of cancer. And most notably, I myself suffered a late-term pregnancy loss in October of 2019. I had consumed the water from my reverse osmosis system because I was under the impression that it would be safe. Three months later, I found out that my nitrate levels had reached, again, 10 parts per million, only 11 months after installation. I have a critic who has said, who said in a letter to the DNR that I speak about my miscarriage too much. But there's a good reason for that. I am forever changed after October 19th, 2019. And I feel I have a responsibility to share my story, not only for my community, but for future generations, as well as the daughter I didn't get to meet. Anecdotally, there is a lot of thyroid disease and cancer in the village. We do not feel safe drinking the water. This is a public health issue. I encourage you, please, support this amendment. The monitoring wells will help us find a path to the clean drinking water, which is what we're all truly after. Thank you.
Dave Mangin?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the county board for hearing us, our parts on this. My name's Dave Mangin. I moved with my family into Nelsonville in March of 2014. Our nitrates at that point were about six parts per million. Since then, they spiked up to about 20 parts per million in 2018. Since then, kind of dropped a little bit, but we hover around 18 parts per million. Pretty, as kind of standard. In 2018, we had a source test done for our nitrates, and there were five agricultural tracers that showed up. And there were zero tracers for, from domestic septic systems. So the notion that I'm drinking my neighbor's refuse is garbage, except that I do have a neighbor who's up gradient with a couple thousand head of cattle, and that may have an impact. $250,000 for these wells is a lot of money, right? So why Nelsonville? Why concentrate it all in one, in one community? Nelsonville has done a lot of work as, as, with us as residents, partnering with, with some of the, the local politicians and with a lot of the professionals in the field who have studied these things extensively. There've been groundwater models dating back to the 70s from the Little Plover River. And now we have reliable data that's parallel to that, that provides valuable information for the groundwater flow and some of the data for our recharge zones for our wells. And it all points to agriculture as being the, the source of these nitrates. The information that we have, though, is incomplete. If we were able to install these monitoring wells, we could more definitively pinpoint the recharge zone. We could more surgically solve this issue with lower impacts to the farm. And we're all invested in this. We're, we are, as a group, you know, you may have noticed the five, the last five or six speakers have gotten up from the same row here. We're all neighbors. We're all friends. We're trying to be solution-oriented. I wish that everybody on all sides of this issue could speak as, as kindly and as considerate of one another. It's not the case. But we're trying to be solution-oriented and move forward in a positive direction. There's been a lot of pushback from a lot of different levels on this. We are very nervous that these ARPA funds would come through. The, at the LWCC level, there have been different measures that have been made to delay and deflect the need for the funding or the, the urgency with which it could come through. Had these funds come through ARPA already, we would, I would be able to know how deep to drill for the next well that I'm applying for right now. As it is, I don't. I don't have faith in the LWCC that we're going to, that we're going to receive ARPA funds on their behalf. And so it seems to me that it's kind of a transfer of funds. Let's just do this. Let's get it done, and let's get the data now. Please, we're asking you of this. We're doing our part. It's time for you to do yours. Thanks again, and thank you, Lionel.
Mildred Neville?
Hi. I'm Mildred Neville. I live at 1709 Jefferson Street, Stevens Point. I was on the Land and Water Committee from April 2021, 2021 to April 2022. So I was two years on the Land and Water Committee. While all of these issues were continuing to be looked at after a number of years of them being looked at. To my mind, this is a critical, serious issue that needs to be looked into. It needs information that these monitoring wells can provide. I really appreciate Lionel Weaver bringing forth this amendment because it needs to be guaranteed that these wells get in. Not that if ARPA fund doesn't come through, then it doesn't happen for how many, how much longer. We're not talking only about the health, not just today and tomorrow and the rest of their lives of people who are living in Nelsonville, but also for the legacy that we're leaving in this county. The legacy in the groundwater, the water that future generations are going to be drinking. The intent of Land and Water Committee, the legislative intent of one part of it is to halt and reverse the depletion of the state soil resources and the pollution of its waters. When I saw this memo that came through to everybody, I had no knowledge of it until shortly before this meeting. But I see that it's from Ruland Law and Strategy, and that really kind of cracked me up. I don't think it's funny, except law and strategy. What are we looking at? They're saying there's no reason to have monitoring wells. There's no problem. And then, that's number one. And then second, they're saying, and if there is a problem, there's nothing you can do about it. The Land and Water Committee has the responsibility to look into problems and to do something. The monitoring wells can help us to do that, and we need the guarantee of it coming through on the actual budget so that if the ARPA funds aren't there, it can happen as soon as possible. Thank you.
Kim Bremer?
Good evening. I'm Kim Bremer. I'm the owner of Ag Inspirations and Executive Director of Venture Dairy Cooperative. Through Ag Inspirations, I work with farmers across Wisconsin on local issues and how to work with town and county boards to get some real solutions done on a number of them. So first and foremost, I get in front of a lot of town and county boards, so thank you for all that you do because serving on your county board is, more often than not, a pretty thankless job. Especially considering how complex issues like this get thrown in front of you. And I agree that there's always, no matter where you are in the state, autonomous information. And it's difficult, you have a difficult task of trying to weed through what is actually the truth and what is not. And it's easy to get caught up in it, and I understand that. I also wish you were alone in facing issues like this, but unfortunately, you're not. But I'm here to offer you a little different perspective and success stories when local boards work with their farmers. Kiwanee County is probably the biggest, biggest example I can bring to you tonight. I know that we've all heard that Kiwanee County has horrible drinking water. I know that we've all heard that Kiwanee County has horrible drinking water, correct? I think if I did a show of hands, everyone could, could raise their hand to that. And for many years, we heard that it was because of large farms and all the CAFOs that are in Kiwanee County. But that simply isn't the truth today. It was always assumed that it was due to the large farms. But the anti-agriculture environmental activist community in that area continually dominated the conversation. I spent two years going to meetings there, trying to come up with solutions with them. And I see a lot of similarities, that no matter what you offer, it's never enough. Now, their water quality has improved and the conversation has changed. And that's because their board decided to stop pandering to the activists and actually work with them. The Chair of the Kiwanee Land and, Land and Water Committee wanted to come tonight, but he's a farmer. And like a lot of your local farmers that know about this situation are unable to make it on a beautiful sunny night, probably in our last, nice, nice evening of the fall, in the final hours of harvest. But I'm happy to connect any of you with them if you are interested in their contact information. So just a few things to consider as I wrap up. The Gordondale, Gordondale Family Farm is more than willing to work with you. And I think sometimes that gets lost in this conversation. We can even talk about, they were on the Nelsonville Water Committee and, and went through and did what? Planted hundreds of acres of alfalfa in your recharge zone and then removed from the committee because there's too much bias. And Kyle already alluded to his recharge zone and how it's planted. We know that there's been, I think there's more than six dairy farms now in your area that have gone out of business, unfortunately, because dairy farmers are my people. But that's what happens. And now the question is, what gets planted? It's corn. So I encourage you to work with your local farmers. I wish you could see the success stories around the state when you do it. You are not alone in this. And if you do this for Nelsonville, are you going to do this for Plover? I mean, this really becomes a slippery slope and one for you to consider. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it. And Ray, I did not ever send a letter to Wood County. But that's what I mean, like, it's so easy. Adventure. But I'm just saying, like, that's how easy it is. Like, they sent, they sent letters to Wood County.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else from the public that got in late that didn't have an opportunity to speak that would like to? Okay. We will adjourn the annual meeting to hold, of, the, hold, hold the public hearing reconvened to the annual meeting. Review and approval of October 4th, 2022 minutes.
Mr. Chair, do you need a motion to adjourn that hearing?
Dave, I'll take one.
I'll move to adjourn the hearing.
Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Splinter.
Wrong brother.
Matt, Supervisor Matt Jakowski. Make you wear way, name tags, so. Thank you. All in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed? That meeting is adjourned. We are back into our annual meeting. Review and approval of October 4th, 2022 minute, minutes. Move by Supervisor Ladick, seconded by Supervisor Dubek. Discussion, corrections, changes? All those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of October 11th, 2022 minutes. Move by Pataki, seconded by Supervisor Barry Jakowski. Discussion, corrections, or changes? All those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Correspondence. Portage County Board of Supervisors Department Head Holiday Party. We have this in your packet. We haven't had one for a number of years. I always encourage people that's, there's 25 of us and the department heads and the rest of us. It's good to be able to see ourselves outside and make sure we don't talk about business, but other things that are going on with the families and, and stuff, and realize that we are all part of a collective group, so. If you, when is the deadline for that?
We have the packet here today, so you can sign up. We'll have it again at the November 15th meeting as well.
Okay. Presentations. We have Kyle Weber, Wisconsin Account Manager, and Brian Hoffman, Vice President, Sales, and Election Systems and Software Voting Equipment.
Can you guys hear us? Thank you to the board, the Chair, County Clerk, for having us to take a few minutes here to talk about the voting system in Portage County. Kyle Weber, the Wisconsin Account Manager for ESNS, which is your current voting vendor for the equipment and services. And this is Hoffman, VP of Sales, as we were previously introduced. I want to start just by going into a quick, little, brief history of the voting system here in Portage County. Way back in 2006, following the passage of the Help of America Vote Act, the county purchased the AutoMark voting system. One of the requirements of HAVA, or the Help America Vote Act, was that every polling place in the United States had, had to have an ADA accessible device to help anybody vote on their own in privacy. So the AutoMark did that. I believe they were purchased with federal grant money. And it, it did that job well, but that was back in 2006. Then in, starting in 2010, some of the municipalities in Portage County purchased the DS-200 as a voting tabulator. That included the city of Stevens Point, the village of Plover, and several others. Through the years, many more have added them as well.
Just to clarify, ADA, a voted assisted device does not tabulate ballots, but it assists voters in making their selections if they need audio feedback, if they need a larger screen. And we'll show that on, on the new device that we're showing. And then the DS-200 is the device that actually tabulates and counts the ballots. So just to be clear what we're talking about when we're talking about the different devices. And so some of the municipalities have the, the tabulator portion of this.
Yep, so that's where we're at today. All 28 municipalities in Portage County are still using those AutoMarks that were purchased in 2006. There are 15 municipalities that now have the DS-200, albeit on a kind of older platform, which I'll talk about a little more later. One municipality still has an M100, which was the predecessor to the DS-200, which is also an older tabulator piece of equipment. And there are 12 municipalities who count their votes by hand, hand tally by poll workers at the end of the night. The, the, kind of the proposed voting system changes that are being discussed here in Portage County. The first one is to replace those AutoMarks that are from 2006 with the Express Vote, which we're going to give you a demo of here in a minute. The AutoMark has done well, we're proud of it, but it is 16 years. 16 years for an electronic device is a long time. Things have changed, technology has changed. It's served its purpose, but it's, its time has come. We are also planning to upgrade all of the existing DS-200s from our older Unity platform, that we call it, to our newer electionware platform. So it's kind of like the, the base of our system. Everything is more modern, more up to date, all the screens have changed. But we can continue to use the same equipment. So those pieces of equipment will not be wasted here in Portage County. We can update them at no charge, and they will work and look as a new machine. The remaining hand-count municipalities. The county is proposing a, a pretty generous loan buyback program to those municipalities so that they can purchase a DS-200 at this time and pay the county back over several years so it's not so much of a hit to their municipal budget. These are generally the smaller municipalities where the dollar amounts can make a big difference. We are going to add a reporting system to the county clerk's office. So as of right now, when the, the voting is done on election night, all of the tabulators will print out a tape, or the hand-count municipalities will have their hand tally. And all those results have to be transferred and communicated into the county clerk's office. That's either done by bringing the tapes over, calling them in, there's various methods. None of them are very good. What we can do is we can take sticks and we can read into our reporting system software in a matter of seconds, get all those results in 100% accurate, no chance for human error, no, you know, mistyping something, and all of that goes away. So it'll be a much more efficient and accurate system. And then lastly, in, in making the, the change from our Unity system to our newer electionware platform, there's going to be a lot more security enhancements. It's a more modern technology. Everything's encrypted, everything's digitally signed. And so you're really making quite a big step up in kind of the underlying technology that secures this equipment.
For those of you that might be computer savvy, which I'm not necessarily, it's almost going from a Windows XP platform, bypassing Windows 7, and moving to a Windows 10 platform. That's how far advanced you're, you're, you're coming into the security world. That's, that's changed drastically in our industry over the past five to seven years specifically, but also just bringing it to a, a newer platform.
Okay, so we're going to go through a demo of the Express Vote.
We're trying to elevate a little bit so everybody can kind of see a little bit easier. And I'll, I'll move it forward too, so it's, the screen's not.
Okay, so this is the Express Vote. You know, it has all the ADA capabilities. We talked about HAVA, you have to have that. But we, we like to call it a universal voting system because we feel like it's good for all voters. And you're going to see why here in a minute. So you start the voting session by inserting the Express Vote card. It will pull up the first contest. This one is just a simple demo that we use for, for demonstration purposes. It says favorite dog breed, vote for one. Then the voter makes their selections by touching anywhere along a box for one of the certain candidates. So they make their selection, then you hit next, and you flip through it like pages on a book. Once you're off the first page, there's a previous button, and you can go back if you wish. If a voter makes a selection and then changes their mind, they can touch a different selection. And if it's a vote for one, it will automatically flip for them. And at any point, they can clearly see who they're voting for. It's marked with a yellow box and then a green checkmark. So it's very clear, cut and dry, who they're choosing. If it's a multiple vote race, so for instance, this one is a vote for two contest, like certain school boards are, sometimes, you know, town, village councils. The voter makes two selections, and they change their mind. If they try to just make, make a third selection, the machine won't automatically flip for them like it will on a vote for one because we don't know which one of the two you've already chosen to get rid of. And we don't want to make a guess at it. We want the voter to tell us which one to get rid of. So this message tells them that too many selections, you need to go back and deselect one. So I can deselect a choice, and then I can make my second selection again. There are all the ADA features on this, so it has a keypad on the side here with Braille. It has headphones that you can plug in and listen to an audio ballot. So everything that's being shown on screen is being read to the voter. If a voter is, they can look at it and hear it at the same time, if that's their preference. If they truly are a audio-only voter, at any point, they can hit the screen button, and the screen goes black. And now they, they're listening to an audio-only ballot. That way, they know, no one is looking over their shoulder and seeing what they're selecting. There's also a high contrast button down below here. So that's, people with certain vision problems prefer to see white on black, it's easier for them to see. It can take ADA input devices. So that's a rocker paddle, sip and puff, generally if a voter needs one of those, they can just, they bring their own and they can plug into the machine. And the kind of the most popular ADA-type feature is just the zoom button. Blows the text up. You know, people get into the polling place, either can't see the type on the ballot, they forgot their readers at home, it's quite common. You put them on the Express Vote, hit the zoom button, it's nice and big, they say, yeah, I can see this, this is easy to vote. So I'm going to go through, you have to go through every contest. There's no jumping ahead, there's no skipping ahead, there's no missing a contest. I'll make my selection here, this is another proposition, my selection. Now hit next, I'm at the end of the ballot. Actually, I'm going to go back and skip one. I'm now at the end of the ballot, and now I have to review all my selections. So I've seen, I've made all my selections along the way, now I have to review all my selections. If the voter votes for the correct number in a contest, you get a green checkmark next to it that says, yep, this was voted properly. This one at the end here, though, where I took my selection away, you get kind of a yellow circle with an exclamation point in it. And that warns the voter, it says, this contest was not fully voted. Now, that's fine, voters can skip races, they do it all the time. But if a voter sees that and says, you know what, I didn't mean to do that, I want to go back and make a selection. They could hit previous, 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 but if this is a long ballot, that can be hard to go back and find that right contest. So they can touch right on that contest, it brings them to it. They make their selection, they hit next, it goes right back to the review screen. It highlights the change that they made. And now the voter looks at this and says, yes, this is how I want to vote. This properly shows all my selections. So at this point, we're at the end of the review screen, we hit print card. Now it's going to print out the card, so when it, when it went in, it was blank. And now it's going to be marked. So this marked card comes out, and it's got the name of each contest and the name of their, their choice that was made of each candidate, right on down the line. So the voter can look at this card and say, yes, this card accurately reflects how I intended to vote. So voter really gets three chances to verify their selections. The first is when they see the contest and they touch on screen, and it lights up and gets the green checkmark. They get the second chance, the review at the end. And now here's their third chance to see, and they can see on the printed card. If there's ever a recount, which are quite common here in Wisconsin, this is what's going to be recounted. It's going to be shown just as it is, printed on this card. And somebody's going to look at it and vote this and, and look at it to tabulate in the recount. As Brian said, this is not a tabulator, this is just to mark cards. So the voter at this point, they would take their card, come over to the DS-200, which is the tabulator, get it scanned, and get it counted. When it's done, it says, thank you for voting, your ballot has been counted, ready for the next voter. A couple other things I want to talk about. So because this is not a vote tabulator, it can be used for in-person absentee voting in the state of Wisconsin. So currently, state law does not allow for tabulators to be used for in-person absentee voting. But because this is not a tabulator, we can use it, it's used in many municipalities throughout the state. And the advantage of that is, you know, if a voter votes in person absentee on a traditional paper ballot, they can make all kinds of mistakes and not know it, whether that's an overvote, a crossover, they skip races.
They circle the candidates rather than fill in the oval.
Yep, they, they, sometimes people don't fill in the oval properly. They make all those mistakes, they fold up their ballot, they put it in the absentee envelope. It sits in the clerk's office for a couple weeks. Election day comes, it gets opened up, you pull it out, they run it on the DS-200 to get counted. And while the DS-200 will warn the municipal clerk at that moment that there's a problem, the voter's not there anymore. It was an absentee, they're not there to correct their selections. Clerks in Wisconsin are authorized to, to make some voter intent decisions, but it's, that's only what's clear. So they can do the best they can for the voter and get it counted. If you vote in person absentee on the Express Vote, by the time this card comes out, you know it's going to count on election day. Because you cannot overvote, which is vote for too many selections, it will not let you. You can't crossover vote, which is in the August primary. If you vote all one party, and then if you vote even one candidate in another party's contest, all of your partisan selections get thrown out. So that's not possible on here. So when a voter folds this card up and puts it in the envelope, they can be assured, they know their vote is going to count on election day as they intended. Secondly, another advantage of the Express Vote is it can be a cost-saving device. So in general, these blank cards are cheaper than these printed ballots, full-size printed ballots. So you get some cost savings right off the bat, just from the, the raw cost of the material. But where you really can get some savings is because if this, this isn't used on election day, and many times, there are, you know, lots of unused ballots, these get put on a shelf for the retention period, and then they're thrown away and they're trashed once the retention period passes. That's just money you're throwing away. On the Express Vote cards, if you don't use them, they're blank. You don't use them, you put them back on your shelf, you get them out next election. You'll never throw away an unused Express Vote card. So over time, you can start decreasing the amount of ballots you need. Just keep them on Express Vote cards, and you can save money in the long run. Okay, moving on to, real quick, the DS-200. Both kinds of ballots can go through the DS-200. So the Express Vote card, like I showed earlier, I'll just do another one. And then also the full-size paper ballot. It gets scanned, it gets counted, it says, thank you for voting. That was a good ballot, had no, no voter issues with it. But here's an example of a voter issue. So on this one, I have overvoted, where I filled in too many ovals for some of the contests. If I put that in the DS-200, it's going to stop. It hasn't counted the ballot yet, it's holding the ballot in here, it's secure, nobody can get to it, but it has not counted it yet. And on the screen, we warn the voter that they've, they've made an error. We've changed all of our messaging, so it's plain English now. We don't even use the term overvote because not a lot of voters know what that mean, what that means. It says, you have filled in too many ovals in four contests. So we spell it out nice and easy for the voter. These votes will not count. In the contest for favorite dog, you chose two, you are allowed one. So we tell the voter what mistake they made, where they made it, but we do not show on screen who they voted for because we don't want anybody else in the polling place to see that. So hopefully, if a voter sees that, they say, oops, I made a mistake. They can hit return, it'll spit the ballot back to them. And then Wisconsin's a three-strikes and you're out states, so every voter is allowed up to three ballots. You can go back to the checking table, spoil your ballot, get a new one, hopefully fill it out right this time, and get it counted.
What happened with that bill that's been there?
Spoiled ballots. Spoiled ballots usually get marked in some ways so they won't be counted. Either they write spoiled on them, some people will tear a corner off so that it's unable to be tabulated.
The state and the county has processes in place for spoiled ballots. And so there's always a reconciliation of, okay, we've got one spoiled ballot, it goes into a special envelope, it's marked so it can't be counted. And then we've given that voter another ballot. And it's all tracked through state processes and county processes.
The other thing I want to discuss, so the DS 200 is an imaging system. So it is, as it's scanning, it is taking a picture of every ballot that's being cast in the county. And when the election's over, that is a record that is then kept. So every image of every ballot is now scanned and kept as part of the public records. And then, yeah, so this is, although this is a DS 200, it's a newer DS 200. But remember, all the 15 that you currently have in the county, we will upgrade to this version. And what this version does is all the screens are different. So you, you know, I'm sure you guys all vote in here. You may notice the machine looks the same, but the screen looks different than what you're used to seeing. This is a little more advanced looking, it's got the animation. That's kind of a sign of our newer platform. And there's all that extra additional security measures built into this platform as well. I just kind of wanted to wrap up with some stats. So there's only four counties currently in Wisconsin that are still using those auto marks that you guys have from 2006. Oh, sorry, that are still on Unity. There's only six that are still on the auto mark and those are waning as well. Your neighbor Wood County still is using the auto marks for one last election, but they've actually already purchased Express Votes and they're gonna go forward with those next year. And then you'll be one of 20 counties that have a reporting system at the county level. And that's generally the larger counties. You know, the bigger the county, the more need there is for a robust reporting system. Smaller counties can get away with doing it by hand. So that's all I have. I appreciate your time. If you guys have any questions, which we do.
Before we get into questions, there was one part that was touched on and it was the part about the auto mark, this one. That records the image or takes a picture of the image. Maria, can you explain why that's so important?
Sure. So our office receives a lot of open records requests related to elections. And for the 2020 election to scan in, I think it was 45,000 ballots, would have taken our office almost three months. We still might have that request coming in. We're kind of in a holding pattern. So one of the things, as part of the CIP, that was already approved, was to bring us up to a better software so we can create that record and provide that to the public as it's requested.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
What's the life expectancy of that machine? I know the townships that got won under federal funding, you know, don't have a lot of elections. The printers would fail on them, the inks would be dried, the jets wouldn't work. Some of those, I'm wondering.
Yeah. That's a good point. One of the things that we've done with the Express Vote specifically is there's no more consumables. Okay, so we use a thermal paper, which is kind of like a gas station. You can see the paper's a little thicker than a gas station receipt. But rather than have ink cartridges that dry up, don't happen to work in the auto mark and things like that, we use a thermal printer. There are no consumables in the Express Vote. And when you talk age of the system, we're expecting that the system will be available for at least 12 to 15 years. That's pretty standard in the election industry. What tends to happen is election laws and federal requirements will change faster than necessarily the equipment wearing out. And that sometimes drives the momentum for change. The auto mark that you've had since 2006, you know, you're doing really good. You're 16 years in to having that. The county or the jurisdiction that's got an M100, that was probably bought sometime in 97 or 98. So they're looking at, you know, over 20 years. But we're anticipating that the system will be available for 12 to 15 years for you.
Well, why I ask the question, you know, I vote in a small municipality. That wood box that I stick my ballot in has been 40 years pretty reliable.
Right, absolutely. Yep, absolutely, yep.
Anybody else? Supervisor Duback.
How do you do write-in votes?
Yeah, that's a good point. You wanna show a write-in real quick?
Yep. Said write it up that I want to know.
Yep. Yeah, that's a good question. So I'll start a new voting session here. Grab the mic so they can hear us.
It's picking you up.
Yep, is it? Okay. So a write-in, there's always, that's very common. Wisconsin required to program a write-in in every contest. That's not every state's like that, but in Wisconsin, we do. So if a voter wants to vote a write-in, they check the write-in box and then it just pulls up a simple keyboard. They could vote whoever they want. So I'll type in a quick name. And then it hit accept. And now it says write-in and it shows the name that I chose to write in. And then I'll just finish my voting session here so I can show you the printed card at the end. So what we found is, you know, on the paper ballots, if somebody wrote in, it kind of jumps out because it was handwritten by a person on a printed ballot. And it was kind of easy to pick up by looking at it. But that's not necessarily the case on the Express Vote, right? Everything on here is computer typed. So to make it easier to find, we added, if there's a write-in vote, there's an arrow that's printed next to the name. So it does say W slash I and then the name that I wrote in there for write-in. But to make it easier on the poll workers, because they have to pick these out by hand at the end of the night, they can just scan down the right-hand edge, look for any arrows, and it marks the write-in that way. And then when it gets tabulated by the DS 200, it counts however many write-ins there were. And it's up to the poll workers later to go through and decide, you know, which are valid and which are invalid. The state did make a change in law a few years ago. We went to a registered write-in system. So before this change, everything had to be counted. And there was a lot of stuff that's not very serious. Mickey Mouse, Jesus Christ, they get written in very often. So they had to count those though, because it was written in. Now it's a registered write-in system. So before election day, a candidate can come in and sign a form with the filing officer and say, I want to be a registered write-in. And then those get counted. If there are no registered write-ins, poll workers do not have to count write-ins. They can just say they're all invalid because nobody filed to be a write-in. But for instance, in next week's election, there was somebody, I don't know if it's governor or senate, I think there's a statewide registered write-in. So poll workers across the state will have to look at that.
Anybody else have? Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chai. I have two quick questions, one for the vendor.
Use your mic, please.
Thank you. My question is, you had a statement in plain English, you know, I'm wondering, is there gonna be language options on here as well? Portage County has a lot of Latino voters, Moong voters.
Correct, yeah. We support what up to nine, I think, built-in languages. And I think there's several more we can add. In Wisconsin, we can, we do several. We do Spanish in some jurisdictions. But currently, I don't believe anybody in Portage County is requiring that. But if it does become a requirement here, we can add it in very easily as part of our programming. And then it just becomes a button at the bottom of the screen. It says, continue in English or, you know, continue our in Espanol. And then the voter can choose the language that best suits them. The city of Milwaukee has to have Spanish. And then we've got a couple of counties like Dane and Rock County where they are doing the Spanish on the Express Vote, even though they're not required to. But it just gives those voters an option because there's really no harm in activating that, putting that button on the machine. So that is an option as well.
Great, thank you. And just to follow up on that, Maria, is that something that we're going to be adding, especially with our Moong population and our Latino population?
By using these machines, it makes it accessible for us to do that.
Great, great, thank you. And then my second follow-up is, Maria, you mentioned that these voting machines are in our CIP in our budget. We had talked about it last meeting. Is that gonna be kind of refunded by the SLRF or ARPA funding later in the year, once that's approved? Or was that applied for by the clerk's office to the finance?
We did apply for that funding as well.
So then potentially, if it would get funded through ARPA, we'd be like reimbursing ourselves. Is that how I understand it?
That's a question for Jenny.
Sorry, Jenny.
Is this on? Okay, it wouldn't be refunded. We just use that mechanism to finance it. So we wouldn't refund it, because all of this is scheduled for next year. So those decisions will be made prior to the first of the year.
But it's in our budget currently and then if.
It's in the county's plan, you're adopting the budget tonight. So it's not in any budget right now.
Okay.
Because you haven't approved it.
Thank you. Yeah, I understand that. It's in the plan that we're gonna potentially adopt tonight. And then, and then we have the opportunity to use the SLRF and ARPA funding for that. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure it was clear in my head. Thank you.
Supervisor Pataki.
How do you do a recount?
Recounts in Wisconsin can be done two ways. Law gives the, I believe, the county board of canvassers the choice to choose between a machine recount or a hand recount. We've, you know, we did a statewide recount of the 2016 November election. We did a partial recount for Milwaukee and Dane counties after the 2020 election. That's where it was chosen. Those are both our customers as well. But yeah, the board of canvassers can choose. If it's a machine recount, the ballots are fed back through a tabulator. Usually a central tabulator, high speeds, we can get done quickly. We also support hand-count recounts, which is basically you sit down with the ballots and you count them by hand. If you're only recounting one race, typically you sort them into piles by candidate and then count those piles and tally the results up that way.
Who makes a decision whether it's a machine or a hand count?
I believe the county board of canvassers.
That is correct. And traditionally, in Portage County, we have done a hand count for recounts.
So there's actually, how many ways of recording? How many ways will this be recorded? You have a paper, the actual ballot, you have a reel or a paper reel and a flash drive?
Yeah, there's, you have the ballots themselves, you have the tape that comes off the DS 200. You will have the report that comes off the county's reporting system. So you have three sets of results. And that's kind of what the canvas usually is, is you sit down with all three of those results and you make sure they match across all three.
Supervisor Keller.
Thank you. You talk about the paper that's being used, thermotransfer? Is that?
Thermal paper, yes.
Thermal paper. So, and I just wanted to make the comment, the receipt I get from the gas station stays crystal clear for hours.
Yeah.
All right. How long are these gonna stay reliable?
Yeah, this is.
Because when it comes down to it.
High-quality thermal paper. You know, if you leave a receipt in your car in the summer, it'll just turn black sometimes. That will not happen to this. I've got cards sitting around in my office that are several years old. They're still perfectly legible. The worst thing that happens is maybe around the edges, they yellow a little bit, but that's it. They're fine. You're not gonna lose your votes or your paper record.
Yeah, the record's gotta be saved for a federal election. There's a 22-month retention span. They've done weather tests, the EAC, which does the certification, or they've done weather tests and believe that cards will hold up for as many as five years.
Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
You talk about cost savings going completely with the Express Vote system.
Can you use the mic, Matt?
Oh, sorry. You talk about cost savings in paper and printing costs going strictly with the Express Vote system. How many Express, or one Express Vote system will work for how many eligible voters?
Yeah, that's a, we get that question a lot too. It's a tough question to answer, because there's a lot of variables involved. The first is, what's on the ballot? If there's, you know, five contests and if they're all vote for one, that's a pretty short ballot. The voter can get through it pretty quickly. If there's 20 contests and if there's complicated contests, and certainly if there's long referendums, that's gonna take voters a lot longer to get through. So that depends, it also depends on the voter. Some voters will read through it and get through it very quickly. Some will need a little more time to digest what they're looking at. But in general, our recommendation is one Express Vote per every 250 voters. And that's, we've done that through the years. We had another older system that was a kind of electronic-type system and that was our recommendation there, because it was kind of same idea. They presented the ballot on a screen. It's gonna take you some time to read it, make your selections and get through. But I will say, in general, voters actually get through the Express Vote session faster than getting through a paper ballot. There's a lot on there. It's hard to kind of follow where you're going, make sure you hit everything. Voters take a lot of time looking this over. This is pretty simple, cut and dry. Here's this contest, here's your choices, pick one, next. Here's your next contest, here's your choices, pick one and next. That's particularly important here in Wisconsin. That August primary ballot, if you guys remember that, that is a complicated ballot. We had four parties on the ballot this time. The state puts out a ballot layout that we have to follow. They add a lot of wording to it. It's an attempt to try to help the voters. It's good intentioned, but it ends up being a lot of text, a lot of words on the ballot. They make us put like, start one party, all the contests, stop with the stop sign, and then start next party, stop sign, all through all four parties. That can be a lot for a voter to get through. Whereas if you get on the Express Vote, there's gonna be the party preference contest. And when you choose your party, it's gonna bring you straight to that party and it's only gonna show you that party. So there's, it's light easier to get through and there's no chance of you doing a crossover vote.
Anybody else? Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
What other type of systems is out there?
There's currently three vendors certified for the state of Wisconsin. We're, of course, one of them. We are the, we have 30 counties as of right now. But we've got quite a few of the larger counties. So about two-thirds of the voters in the state of Wisconsin vote using our system, including nine of the 12 largest counties.
Anybody else? Supervisor Maresi.
One more quick one. You probably get this one all the time too. Power goes out. We used to have a pen and a paper and, you know, and I guess I'm kind of old school. That's a nice redundancy right there.
Good question. That's actually, I think, something that differentiates our equipment. Both machines, although it doesn't look like it, have built-in battery backups. It's not an extra piece. Some other solutions require to get like an off-the-shelf battery backup, which they're big and heavy and expensive. But if I show you real quick, here's our power to the two machines here tonight. I can unplug them, both of them just keep going. They don't miss a beat. You can keep voting. This one will beep when it's on battery to warn you that it's on battery, but it will keep going.
Batteries will last about four hours. That was your next question. You can tell we've had this happen before. It's about four hours and when electricity comes back on, they're charging again as soon as electricity comes back on. So if you run into a situation where they just go dead, you know, you can swap this out if you've got another one that's got full battery. And so you've got redundancy. And nothing's lost if it does go dead, nothing's lost. I've had that happen where, out in Idaho, a customer, I was with the clerk, we got a phone call, our screen went black. Blank, it went blank. Is it plugged in? Yes, it's plugged in. So we get there, everything was plugged in except it wasn't, the electrical extension cord wasn't plugged into the wall. The machine was plugged into the extension cord, but the extension cord died to the wall. So I don't know how she missed it, because it was sitting right here. And for four hours, that thing beeped every minute and she somehow didn't notice it until the screen went blank. But then we came in, we plugged it in and we were able to move it. If something does happen, there is an emergency drawer here that if this power just does go out, you flip that down. And the voters will put the ballots in there until power has been restored. And then at a convenient time, you'd have two party poll workers come in and feed those ballots in at a convenient time, whatever the county processes are.
Thank you. I noticed it beeped when you plugged it back in.
Yeah.
I saw you unplug and unplug. So I wanted to know for the rest of the group, what kind of backups this is.
There's also an icon on the screen. As of right now, it shows like two cords plugged in, because we've got power. Once it's on battery, it turns into a battery icon. People kind of are used to it now from cell phones. If it's full and green, you've got a nice full charge. As it gets to be yellow, orange and red, your battery's running out, so you know roughly how much time you have.
Thank you.
Barry, did you have another question or I seen you had?
No, not really. I was only gonna ask, you know, why our clerk prefers this system.
For all the reasons he stated. No, I will say.
And I think, Maria, I think we're gonna leave the Express Vote here, right?
Yes.
In your office.
Mm-hmm.
If, you know, over the course of the next couple of weeks, you want to come in.
Yeah.
Have it there and be able to show demonstrations.
And just to update you all too, so we've been working with the various municipalities on this. And so far, we have all but two who have agreed to take the allotted amount of Express Vote machines. So in this county, we will have 201 of those machines distributed and used every election. And the other thing I just wanted to point out too, based on the numbers from the latest election of the August primary. If we would have been using this system, the county and our budget would have saved $8,000 that election by using these unprinted ballots versus the pre-printed ones that we currently use. So over the course of a two-year election cycle, we'll be saving a lot of money and resources in paper.
There's not a lot of things that we can do as a county that affects everybody, I would say, equally per pop, based on the population for the county. But this is one area that we can seem to touch and hopefully make it better. But this is one area that, that we, we can seem to touch and hopefully make it better. As we all know, getting people for poll workers and everything else gets tougher and tougher. And to have things run more efficiently and quicker and, and get done faster and more accurate. I know of several people who thought they probably voted in the primary and didn't because they crossed over parties and they told me they didn't like that. It's, it's, sorry, but that's, that's the way it is. But this will not allow them to do that. Everybody's vote's going to get counted. So. Anybody else? Supervisor Madine.
I have a question probably for the clerk. If mail-in ballots were approved now or in the future, how would they be integrated into this system?
So as Kyle showed, that tabulator can accept both types of ballots. So the pre-printed paper, in our world, we call it an optical scan ballot. You can still put that into that tabulator and use that.
This is the ballot that would be mailed out for next to voter.
And that's the current ballot we use countywide.
Anybody else? If not?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public notice. Members of the public who wish to address the County Board on specific agenda items must register their requests at this time with such comments subject to reasonable control of the County Board Chair set forth in Robert's Rules of Order. This is kind of a unique meeting being we've already talked about some of the budget items, which I think most of you are here for. So if there's anybody else that wants to speak on anything else? All right. Resolutions, resolutions and ordinances. Number six, adoption of the 2023 Portage County Budget and the property tax levy apportionment for the 2022 tax levy payable in 2023.
This is resolution number 54-2022-2024 submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution adopts the 2023 Portage County Budget and the property tax levy apportionment for the 2022 tax levy payable in 2023.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Discussion. Supervisor Weaver, Weaver.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to amend the budget as more fully set forth in pages 11 through 13 of the board's meeting packet to add $240,130 to the capital projects fund budget to ensure funding for the Planning and Zoning Department's groundwater monitoring wells project in the village of Nelsonville.
I have a motion by Supervisor Weaver. I have a second by Supervisor Rockman. Discussion. There is no discussion. Oh, Supervisor Marassi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd really like us to consider this tonight. The village of Nelsonville has been. Thank you. The, the village of Nelsonville has been waiting for years to get some resolution on the groundwater issues that are plaguing them. Actually, the whole reason I got involved with county politics was to, to help try to resolve this solution or this, this situation and to look for solutions. And I think we have an opportunity here as a, as a county board to, to find a solution by gathering data and giving the people of Nelsonville the data they need to get the wells drilled that they need should they choose to. We have incredibly competent staff and they have guided us through the process as best as they can. We have an active group of community members who range from everyday citizens to world-class scientists being involved with the situation. Unfortunately, we've had a, a law con committee that has been less than amenable to, to progress and, and resolving the situation. And it's taken at least six years for us to actually have this conversation on our county board. And we're, we're finally doing it. We're actually have it at the full county board through this budget amendment that simply would guarantee money in our budget to go forth with some, some groundwater, monitoring wells just to gather data. It is not a fishing expedition. It is merely to gather data to provide information to the folks in Nelsonville so they can drill wells. There was an email sent out prior to this meeting by a law firm that was full of just a complete, complete misinformation about how this is represented, about some sort of witch hunt. I don't think anybody in this room wants to demonize anybody. It is a community that is in need of help and we have the opportunity to provide it to them. $240,000 is, is a good sum of money. And I, I realize that the SLRF and ARPA money has been applied for. There is no guarantee that that money will come through. So what's being asked for here is for Portage County Board of Supervisors to take a stand, guarantee this money is in the budget so they can carry on with the good work that they're doing. And then simply, I don't know if I have the right terminology, Director Josie, but we'll be able to, should, should the Finance Committee approve the ARPA money or the SLRF money to approve these wells as they've been applied for, we can just pay ourselves back with that money. As you saw with my line of questioning about our election equipment, we are doing precisely the same thing. We have budgeted that money to be in our capital budget to get new election equipment, which we all know we need to move forward as a county. And we'll simply, once the, you know, ARPA money is approved, we'll simply transfer bank accounts, basically. Again, I don't know if that's the proper terminology. Correct me if you will, Jenny. But we'll, we'll use that money as, as was originally agreed upon. So we have an opportunity to take care of this tonight, guarantee that $240,000 will be put in the budget for the folks in Nelsonville to drill wells. And then we can basically balance our books with the ARPA money once it is approved. Now I have gotten reassurance from Supervisor Lattick on the Finance Committee. I called him the other night and we talked. Well, we didn't talk really. I, I was pretty angry and I, I kind of chewed him out on how nobody could give this, the time of day on the Finance Committee last week by not even giving a motion to talk and discuss about it, preventing due diligence from actually happening. And then he did guarantee me that Finance will approve the SLF money in the future to fund this project. Now, I don't know if I trust that that's going to actually happen. So that is why I'm asking us tonight to put it in our budget to Supervisor Weaver's recommendation and amendment, put it in the budget and then we can take care of it with SLF money at a later date. Thank you very much.
So I, I've got one question for Director Josie. I've heard it and I've had some conversations and I just, I'm looking for some clarification, but the word guarantee, and, and I'm not talking about Supervisor Lattix. But I, if it gets approved in the budget, what are the next steps for monies to be released? Does it have, is there a resolution that comes to release the money? Things that are approved in the budget or how, how does that money get out of the, out of the budget? So if something's in capital, under capital and it gets approved.
Tonight?
Tonight. Once it's approved, when it comes time to write out the check or pay the vendor, what is there, is there another step that has to go before Finance?
Not typically that it has to go before Finance because the budget appropriates the funding. So if you think about things that we do in the county, we authorize and we appropriate funds. Proving the budget is providing for appropriations, but in certain times you need another authorization. So our purchasing policy sometimes requires us to go through competitive purchasing and for certain items over certain dollar thresholds, a department director can approve it, a committee can approve it or things need to come to the county board. So in many times for contracts and leases, we might see things come to the board where then you're not approving the money, you're approving the contract to proceed with the services. So in some cases, there's also that contract approval step that also needs to happen and that's a purchasing requirement.
We went from nobody to everybody. Supervisor Splinter.
Okay. I'm on the Land and Water Committee and we unanimously, well, we looked at, we looked at the REI monitoring wells over the summertime. We took our time. We looked at both sides of the issue and we all came to the unanimous agreement that the monitoring wells would be a valid ARPA request. And as a county board supervisor, my first object, my, my objective is always to take a look at and see if something makes sense. And then where the, does the federal or the state have a program that, that covers this before we ask our $240,000 out of our citizens' pocket to pay for it? If in the process of this ARPA, this is federal and I don't know this for sure, but if say you pass this tonight and add it to our budget, someone in the depths of Washington DC is going to get this ARPA request and it may say, has it been funded by any other source?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to.
Maybe I'm wrong, I'm going off.
I, I want to correct you though, so you don't go on. And Jen, you can help me with this. But the ARPA funds the money. This is, this is our process at this point. Jen, I'll let you take it.
So it's not subject to federal? Okay.
So the, the funding that we did receive does have criteria and stipulations and we need to live within those criteria. It's treated as a grant. It has a performance period. It has a start. It has an end. And it has criteria that needs to be followed. But once the money was awarded to the county, the county could establish some of their own criteria on how to, how to award the money or how to spend the money. There were some initial requests that we had early on and that was mainly in the, the beginning of 2022, late 2021, where we spent and obligated some of the funds. Finance Committee or this board, actually this body, approved last spring to allow the Finance Committee to come up with a process and be the committee that those requests went through to authorize and approve funding requests. Finance Committee has met multiple times, has established a process, has established a scoring tool to review applications. You know, we talked early on about wanting to make sure that we are awarding the best and brightest things or the, the things that the community needed the most so that we weren't just kind of, it wasn't first come, first served. You put in an award or a request, so therefore you got it. So they came up with a process that they would follow and the first round of applications were due October 1st. So we have between October 1st and January 1st to review and make those awards. And then next quarter, starting January 1st, the whole cycle starts over again. And we will continue that process until all the funds are either awarded or spent.
Okay, thank you. It's my, it's my understanding or assurance that this 240 is not a huge ARPA request and that it's most likely to, to be approved. So, and that, everybody on the Land and Water Committee said, okay, let's go ahead with that as Plan A. Now, at the last minute, someone's coming up with a Plan B. Why not do Plan A first, get that out of the way and then you can come back with your figures and a lot more information. You can also come back with a Finance Committee recommendation, one way or another. What I see on this one is presents amendment to the county with no recommendation, which doesn't assure me that it's got some validity. So that's all I have to say. Sorry.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the board. Just to reiterate a little bit of Jenny's presentation as far as the ARPA funding, one of the stipulations from the federal government was that ARPA funding could be used for water quality improvement programs. The land cons committee said, great, we're going to fit right in here. I don't know why it, that anybody thinks that this project won't go through because it is this body that will approve those fundings once the Finance Committee approves it. It, it seems to me like somebody's trying to make some political hay here. So I would have, I would suggest that we go along with the ARPA funding to fund this program and stop this amendment to the budget.
Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, thanks for recognizing me, Mr. Chair. You know, I was on land and water conservation for two sessions and had heard a large number of presentations and discussions by people like Pete Aronson, Ray Vieser, George Kraft, all our water experts and certainly Specialist McNelly. And what I would like to just talk about is, first of all, speaking in favor of this budget amendment to move the $240,000 into monitoring wells. But also like how, how we go forward from this, how, it's a question of process, process of governance over our, our citizens in this county. You know, the thing that struck me the most in Specialist McNelly's presentation was the incredible number of hotspots of nitrate contamination in Portage County. And the fact that Portage County stands out in the state of Wisconsin as a hotspot. So this $240,000, folks, is just going to be a drop in a very large bucket going forward because isn't our job to protect the public and environmental health of, of this county, right? And by the way, I hear a lot from citizens who I try to represent. And I get the question, particularly when I'm on campus in environmental clubs, talking to people and participating in their meetings. And someone asked me just a few weeks ago, why does the county have such a hard time getting the groundwater cleaned up? You know, what's the problem? What's holding you folks back? And I had to say frankly, I, I didn't have a good answer for that. And you know, I don't just represent citizens over the age of 50 or baby boomer citizens. These are also citizens, people in their twenties, who have to make a decision, you know, do we want to live in a community where, you know, environmental and public health is not that big of a concern? Do we want to be, do we want to base our families here, right? So, you know, let's pass this and then let's take a big look at the future and how we can turn those bright red boxes on Specialist McNelly's maps into nice green boxes with clean water. And so I guess that's about all I have to say on that. Thank you for your time.
Supervisor Peterson.
Thank you. I also sit on Land and Water as chairman. Those monitoring wells were passed with the understanding that ARPA funds were going to be used to pay for it. And since it has come across now, they want to jumpstart that, thinking that it'll, they will be put in faster. I have been on there for five months. There's been lots of arguing from both sides and mistrust I have gotten. I got one email and one phone call the other night. In the phone call, there's lots of misunderstanding that RO systems don't work. I explained to the person that they are, yes, a Band-Aid until more technology comes along as far as they are looking that it's a lot of egg. Nitrites are showing up. There's new stuff coming along. There's new stuff coming along every day or every month, and it has to be adopted by the agricultural community. They have also been offered by the legislature assembly that for well replacement, a lot of this stuff has been turned down or not looked at. Most of the wells that have been put in, in the last couple of years, yes, they are deeper, are coming back with less nitrates. It's not to say that, you know, 20 or 30 years down the road, they could become contaminated also. But hopefully, they will stay the, and as we get more technology on better use of nitrogen and other contaminants or not contaminants, but agricultural use, that we will stay with clean water. So I guess that's all I got.
Supervisor Oki, online. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, I will be brief, and I just want to say that I think the testimony I'm hearing is just very encouraging for protecting our water in Portage County, not only Nelsonville, but for the entire county. So I say, why not would you put in a backup plan? Given, given perhaps ARPA is not going to come our way? Why not put that backup plan in place? Because I hear two things. I hear number one, it's encourage, it's likely that that ARPA money will come through. But in the event it doesn't, because they're looking at qualifiers, then usually put the money in place to let it move forward.
Supervisor Larry Rakowski.
Thank you, Chair. As a Chair of Finance Committee, for me on this topic was majorly procedural. This is majorly a procedural thing for me. I would like to see this go through the state and local fiscal recovery funds. This is not the same as the voting where we're looking at countywide monies. We're looking at one municipality. And it'd be easily to compare Junction City, who's had water issues for 50 years, has four wells and a sewer system that they've spent millions of dollars on, that should come before us and say, well, we'd like $240,000 as well out of your capital fund. And it's, so it's concerning to me that we're going to set a precedent of how we use our capital dollars. Again, I'd like to see this come through the state and local fiscal recovery monies. And I think we can make that happen in the next two months through the finance committee.
Supervisor Barry, Matt Jakowski.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I know I missed a meeting or two because I was in the hospital, but you know, I'm back now, so. Maybe Barry liked my seat better.
We noticed you were gone.
Sat here, so I, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I do have, I guess, three questions for Director Josie. And then I, I also, there was a, an individual that made a statement that they were scared or not confident that the ARPA funds would come from the LWCC. Little misinformation there, the LWCC has already voted and passed this. It will be the finance committee that approves SLRF or ARPA funds, as they've been called this evening. I guess the three questions I have for Director Josie is what defines a capital project for the county here? And, and how does this fit into it? The second question I have is what is being removed from the capital budget to fund this amendment? And the third question I have is what happens if ARPA funds do not come through? Is there any way, shape, or form that this board could approve funds at a later date?
Okay, so you might have to repeat those.
And if I have to repeat them, I just didn't know the overtime.
Yep. So the first question in terms of why capital improvements? So typically, that's where our larger scale projects go through. Typically, they're, you know, county building, facility improvements, land purchases. But it also includes equipment, $25,000 or greater. So in terms of where it best fit, when Supervisor Weaver reached out to me to have a conversation about it, that, that was my suggestion in terms of, you know, did, did it fit in a departmental budget? Probably not. Typically, when we just have larger scale kind of equipment purchases that are going to last more than a year, where's the best house for it? Typically, it's, you know, county owned or county facility things, but it needed a home and this was the best place. Your second question is what's not being funded in capital because of it potentially? Is that, do I have that right paraphrased?
That's correct.
So currently, there wasn't anything specific. I guess the, the longer range thing, just to kind of point out, which you all probably know, is we have two larger scale building projects that are being discussed. You know, it's coming out of fund balance, it's not coming out of the annual allocation. But as we move forward, I think the things that you have to think about in the back of your mind is that capital projects fund, does the roof repairs, does the generator repairs? Whatever, whatever things that pop up that are going to be needed. Because when we do add two large scale projects within the county, that ties up a lot of debt service and levy and funding that we don't have otherwise to do, roof repairs and major plumbing improvements or whatever it is that we need to do. The third question is what if it wasn't? What if state and local fiscal recovery funds don't come through? Like what happens later? If for whatever reason, the funding was not available? I mean, there's always other alternatives for funding. I know I've had long conversations with Jen over time about, you know, state and local fiscal recovery funds, grants, where to find money. But the other option you do have as a body is you can always bring it forth as a budget amendment at any time. You don't just need to make budget amendments at budget time. You'll see later on our agenda, we have 2022 budget amendments, we do them every month. So that's always an option at any time throughout the year if you want to address it. You can come back in February or March and say, you know, it didn't work out, we want to go a different route, we want to put it back on the agenda. So that's an option too.
Just one follow-up question to that, Mr. Chair. So that could be, let's say if for some reason it doesn't get approved for the state and local fiscal recovery fund, that could be initiated by the land and water conservation committee as a budget adjustment?
Yes, so there's a budget adjustment form. Typically, they come through departments to say, you know, we have a need, we got a grant, we're over budget, you know, we are initiating a new program. Whatever the reason, that's either initiated by the department, but it could be initiated by the committee saying, we want to do this.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Hahnle.
I'd just like to briefly comment that since I've been on the board, I have never seen such citizen involvement as I have from the people in Nelsonville who are facing this problem and who have been facing it for four years while we've kind of kicked the can down the road, in my opinion. It's been studied to death. We've had scientific support for this plan. It's $240,000. Don't you think that it's time for us to stand up and get these folks some clean water? We heard a story tonight about the loss of, of a child. How, we've heard about people who have health issues. How can we sit here and not fund it? I don't get it. I, it's, you're right about Portage County. Who's going to want to come and live here? When, when this is the nitrate issue, our clean wa, city of clean water, right? Okay, but if this is an example of county board government, then it's, it makes me kind of ashamed if this doesn't, if this amendment is not approved. Thank you.
Supervisor Lattick.
I suppose I have to comment tonight because Vinnie used my name. I wholeheartedly support putting these monitoring wells in Nelsonville. I have no problem with the project. And we would like to fund it, but I don't want to use capital money to do it. Our capital is levy limited, we all, we know, we all know how the levy limits work. Where we don't get cost inflation, it was 1.67%, I believe, this year. The, the state local fiscal recovery funds, we have that great pool of money. And this project fits right into that definition. And I did get a copy of the application here. And right on the middle of the application, it says, are there other funding opportunities to matching funds for the project? We checked no. There are no currently other funding opportunities available for this work, either federal, non-federal source. Now, if we use this capital tonight, do we need to go back in and amend that application? And then how does that get scored? So, you know, there's these monitoring wells, as I started looking into them, they come from Canada. That's probably not a real easy shipping, so they're probably not going to be here next week. The contractor is fortunate for us, is up in Schofield. But my conversation with him today, just check out, hey, how far out are you guys? They can't get to anything till February. So for us to wait another couple of weeks to maybe get the finance together, community together to get some of these state local fiscal recovery funds looked at. I, I think we should have time to do that. And I did tell Supervisor Mercy that I was in full favor of financing this with the state recovery funds. And I was sure that my colleagues would probably pass it. I can't speak for them, but I had a pretty good feeling with the people that I'm on the committee with. So I just don't understand the urgency. And I'd love to see more people in Nelsonville apply for this state funding that Katrina has offered us and did a town hall meeting over there. I think everybody should be poking a new well in there if they've got a nitrate problem. The monitoring wells will help? How deep should we go? I don't know, but it doesn't, these monitoring wells doesn't, they don't help anybody's private well when that monitoring will get sunk in. It'll tell them how to take further action. But I don't understand the urgency of making this amendment tonight on, on our budget. And like Jen said, we can do an amendment anytime for the next, anytime in 2023. We don't have to do it tonight. So I'm, I'm for staying with the course accident we first approved in land and water and using the ARP funds. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank our planning and zoning staff.
Can you use the mic, please?
For being here this evening to support their project. I appreciate your time coming here. When we were here a few weeks ago and our county executive presented the budget, he said something that caught my attention. And, and I thought he framed it beautifully. He said something to the effect of the way that Portage County spends its money is a direct reflection of its values. And I couldn't agree more. And it just so happens that on that same night, we had a very informative presentation from our water quality specialist. And it's quite clear that we are facing a significant health and safety issue that needs to be addressed. I want to respond to some of the comments that have been made to the best that I can here. First of all, there's been a suggestion that the land and water conservation committee's unanimous approval of the project was somehow premised upon utilizing ARPA money. And that's actually not accurate. We approved the project, period. So it wasn't tied to ARPA money. I've heard that someone is trying to make political hay. Not really, actually just trying to get funding so that planning and zoning can move forward with a project that has been contemplated now since January of 2021. I've heard that why not go with Plan A being ARPA? And that there's no finance committee recommendation. I, I, I followed the process that's set forth to amend the budget. And this did go to the finance committee. They chose not to take it up for discussion. So I don't have any control over that. I don't see why we wouldn't make this amendment again. We've heard that the ARPA application can still go forward. And in the event that the ARPA money is provided, that money will be utilized. In fact, I'm merely proposing the exact same path that the voting machines are going through, which is an expenditure of $960,000. It's no different. There's been a question about whether this could be done later. Sure, it, it can be. We see the budgets get amended after this process fairly regularly. But we're here now as part of the budget process. The other thing that's telling to me is that if we do that and wait, that amendment's going to require a super majority of 17 votes. So now we're probably looking at another impediment to getting this done. So I think that it's time to actually take some action. And to get it done now, I, I can't understand why we would not just simply get it accomplished. I also would appreciate hearing from our finance director if she has concerns with taking this money from the proposed source from a financial perspective. Thank you.
Jen, if you want to.
You know, in terms of the $240,000, in terms of what is in capital, we're at about... Sorry, I don't have a page marked.
Thought you had it memorized by now.
Not quite. We have estimated at the start of 2003 that in capital projects, we will have about 6.9 million assigned, meaning it's not allocated to a project. So within the $240,000, you know, there's funds available within the capital projects funds to move forward. You know, the only, the only lingering concern I have in the back of my mind is what I kind of mentioned before is two large scale building projects coming up and what we're going to do with those. In terms of knowing that we're putting ourselves in a position where we have lots of expenses not, that would be not regular to what we're used to. So that would be the outlying concern. Do I know what that means today? No, because we don't have any decisions really on those. But in terms of the available funding that's there, the funding is there. Do I have concerns about timing of when you do what? That's a board decision to make.
Can I ask just a follow-up question? So 6.9 million as of January of 2023, what do we have right now?
So we've, I don't know that I can answer that because I have the budget stuff in front of me. I don't have that necessarily in front of me. What we project that we will have at the end of 2022? Actually, I take that back. What the number I gave you is at the end of 2023. What I project that we will have at December 2022? What I project that we will have at December 31st, 2022 is 7.1, 7.2 million. Um, because we plan on using some in 2023, that's why it drops, um, $250,000 roughly, um, because we didn't have enough. So, um, so between 7.2 and 6.9 million dollars between the two years is kind of where we stand.
I understood that a, a, as of today, we have more like 12.2 million, correct?
That's all combined total. So that includes money that we've already allocated to projects that are already in process. So we have what we call committed fund balance, and that's already assigned to the things that we're doing. Now, you know, if projects come under, that'll be returned back to the capital improvements fund. If projects go over, which, you know, I know a couple that are, they're going to request a little more money, you know, over time. So, but that's a, the, the 12, uh, 12 million dollar figure would include things that are already allocated to projects as well.
Thank you. And also thank you for your openness and, and willingness to answer my questions throughout the process.
Yep, you're welcome.
Supervisor Pataki.
Looking at the second paragraph, uh, about this amendment, it looks like planning and zoning and land and water, been working on this for 21 years. It says in January 2001, is that a misprint?
It is.
Supervisor Madine.
I plan to vote for this amendment, but I just want to give a little historical background on what the implications are. There are eight incorporated municipalities in Portage County that have home rule and can decide how to take care of these kinds of problems within the municipality. Stevens Point, Whiting, Plover, Junction City of Amherst have all gone through the same discussion in the twenties, thirties, forties, fifties, and sixties, and all chose to install municipal water supply systems. There's some advantage to that because, for instance, Plover has some difficulties in some of their wells and some of the other, so they do not because of the, um, the geology of their area. And so they have blended some of their wells to take care of some of that. In Wausau, because they have problems with PIFAs, which are more general, they have as a larger group and able to, um, ameliate some of those problems. Um, we have four municipalities, four incorporated municipalities that, that have that same level of, a similar level of home rule that have not, that are starting to have these discussions, but have not chosen to have a municipal water supply system. Amherst Junction, Rochelle, Nelsonville, and, uh-
Bill's gentleman.
Lost my train of thought on that. But anyway, we have some municipalities that are going through that, that, that discussion now. Um, no matter what the restrictions that this may ultimately impose on the KFO, there will be other contamination sources in the future that will drive municipalities such as Nelsonville to look very seriously at having a municipal water supply system. Just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of that, that, that no matter what we do with that KFO that is there now, there will be in the future additional considerations that have to be made.
Supervisor Peterson.
Uh, in the discussion that we've had now, it's all about urgency. Uh, once, say this monitoring wells are put in, how long before we would be getting results back on able to act on something?
Are you, go ahead.
So, uh, initial results, there would be an initial sampling done at the time of drilling. Um, usually though, that's just to establish kind of what's coming out of that well at the time of drilling. It needs to settle, um, and kind of reach a state of consistency before actual sampling, um, takes place. So then it would resume on a quarterly sampling schedule after that. It's slated, the proposal includes numbers for two years because that was for the SLFRF uh, funding application and funds for that have to be expended by 2024. Uh, with any set of data in order to, it depends on what kind of questions you're trying to answer with that data. Uh, we would know pretty quickly, you know, we'd be able to detect at what depths there might be nitrate contamination concerns or elevated nitrate concentrations throughout the entire aquifer, which is one of the things that we're looking for, um, with those monitoring wells. If we're trying to answer a question of trend over time or to analyze land use impact changes and their relationship to water quality changes, that takes longer to establish simply because you have to have a body of data in order to do that.
So in source testing, you know, you're trying to find the source of this, uh, some of the stuff in that recharge area is three to 20 years. How long would some of this take?
We always say five years is a good estimate to start analyzing trends or to looking at changes over time, so five years.
So wouldn't it be better to, uh, put in, uh, new wells for these people that would give them quicker results in the urgency that we have here?
Well, that's part of the reason that we approved the other additional SLFR, SL, the other ARPA funding, there's too many letters.
Correct.
Short name for that. That was our attempt to provide, uh, as much as we're able to, a safe drinking water so, sa- safe drinking water source for folks across the county, understanding that we need long-term solutions to this. Our hope is that with monitoring wells, we can assess some of those long-term things like land use impacts and the changes that those present to water quality so that we can better guide our recommendations to landowners. Nelsonville happens to serve as a good case study opportunity. It's reflective of a lot of different areas of geology, aquifer characterization. It's similar to that. It's just in a nice kind of confined package, um, in the area that it lies in. Um, so it actually makes a really good kind of case study for us so that we can analyze some of these things, some of the recommendations that we're making, the impacts of the alfalfa crops that were put in. I would have loved to have had monitoring wells prior to that so that I could really analyze that throughout the entire aquifer, um, those type of things. Those do take time.
I agree. I mean, it, it is a good area. There are lots of, uh, data from the farm has kept very good records on what it does use. Um, and the village has been taking samples for quite a few years. But, uh, the urgency of this here, the monitoring wells, not to downgrade them, but it's going to be years before we get results that we can act on, correct?
Potentially. Uh, you know, again, it's, it's speaking to in terms of like trends that will take years to establish. We can probably pretty quickly say, you know, take a look at data and hopefully make that casing depth recommendation for those folks that are looking at wells. Hopefully we can look at that pretty quickly within a couple rounds of sampling, have the data. We've tried to do that already within the village with the existing residential wells. However, we're lacking enough data to get a statistically significant, um, recommendation for those folks. At the time when we did the, uh, the analysis for that, there simply weren't enough wells at those deeper depths to really get a good idea of where we wanted to, to make that recommendation. That's one of the main things that we're looking for out of these monitoring wells, um, of those five purposes that are stated in that monitoring plan. Hopefully that we can get much quicker.
Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Supervisor Dodge.
You know, I always come in at the end.
Got a bad cleanup.
Yeah. I have five minutes. Um, I guess I was glad to hear the chairman of the finance committee and his reasoning uh, for why he didn't make a motion to put this on the floor or on the table at finance because that's exactly how I feel. Um, I do not believe that, um, doing voting machines countywide is the same as providing monitoring wells for one municipality. Mr. Gifford, uh, Mr. Gifford mentioned hotspots. We have some in the town of Stockton. Um, I can see folks from Stockton Road coming to the town board and requesting that we apply for capital funds from Portage County to do groundwater monitoring. Um, I think we're opening ourselves up to some conflict here. Um, there is ARPA funding available. Um, I haven't heard anybody say that they would not really truly consider, um, the request from planning and zoning. I know that I'm totally open to it. I understand the issue. Um, I just think this is the wrong place to get the money from. And I happen to scan Facebook every now and then, and I saw Mr. Weaver's, um, Facebook page, and there was a comment from a gentleman from the USDA who said they help fund programs just like this, and I'd be more than happy to learn more and see if we can't help. And he gave his telephone number. I guess I'm curious if Supervisor Weaver contacted that gentleman.
I have actually talked with that gentleman, uh, since that Facebook post and made contact with him regarding his programs. Unfortunately, USDA does not currently have any funding available for the village of Nelsonville because they are not a water utility. Should the village decide to go down the route of forming a water utility, that opens up numerous funding opportunities from both the USDA and the DNR. I have a question in right now that I'm trying to get follow-up is if they can establish a water utility while maintaining private residential wells, or if it has to be a municipal drinking water source. I'm working on trying to figure that information out currently.
I guess it's just a point that it's another funding source. It's a federal organization. Um, you know, we ought to be looking at them as a resource.
But it, their funding currently doesn't fit for Nelsonville because they're not a water utility, so it isn't available.
And is that a surprise? I guess my other issue is the funding that we've given for the reverse osmosis program. Um, have we had a really good response to that program?
So currently, we have been averaging about 60 water tests per month, um, for folks. So that's 60 residences per month that are coming us to get their water tested. Um, the results kind of dictate their availability into the program. That program has only been running since August. So we're really looking at the August applicants right now that have been submitted for reimbursement. We currently have 10 applications for reimbursement from that August group. We just got September's numbers back. We're going to be contacting them for the next round of applications, uh, for reimbursement. And then we currently have five, um, of our TN applications in, and those are for $10,000 apiece. So, um, five TN applications for reimbursement. As it currently stands, I don't think we will use all of the allocated funds that were dedicated to that program, uh, back in April. I've had discussions with, um, Finance Director Josie about that process. We agreed that evaluating those funds at the six-month mark was appropriate. Um, we have seen some influence of the state funding that has become available. Uh, we've seen some residences that would qualify for our local program that are instead pursuing funding through that state program. We want to give that state program a chance to also kind of run its course to see how quickly their funding gets used up. And then I think, you know, if their funding runs out, we're going to see an increase in our local funding as well. So there's kind of multiple things at play. But I have talked to her, with her about the process for reallocating some of those funds back into the general ARPA funding.
And the original was what, 2 million?
2.3 million.
Okay, 2.3 million. So there's some potential that there will be a quarter of a million dollars-
Potentially, yes.
... available from that program.
It is my understanding though, it's in that reallocation process, we don't reallocate to a specific project, but it instead goes back into the general ARPA funds.
So is that all a possibility?
Correct, with that project and any others, because some of them got some later starts. So perhaps what we, what we, um, obligated at the time, they're not going to use the full amount. So part of the process and part of this whole process is we go through the applications and look at where we're at and file, we have to file quarterly reports to the feds. We will be reviewing with, you know, those projects, this one and others, to say, where are you at? Are you going to spend all your dollars? And in cases where they're not, they will slowly shift back to the fund and then they would go, any reallocations would go through the same process of an application to go back out. It's not like, you know, Jen would just be able to say, I just have a different project, we'll just put it there. It still has to go through a process.
We'll try to keep it in, uh, planning and zoning. But no, I thank everyone for all their hard work, a lot of time and energy. Thank you for the information you sent on Friday.
Absolutely.
Uh, it filled a hole for me as far as information as a finance committee member. So thank you much. I got two minutes left. I'm not going to use it.
Good. Supervisor Keller.
I, I just have one quick question, uh, because just raised the issue again. I mean, this is for a project that's all approved, the money's allocated, it's supposed to come from ARPA. And all we're doing here is talking about insuring, right? I wanted to ask Director Josie, do you feel that there's absolutely, and that's a reason that we have to worry about that funding happening?
Um, I haven't read the application, I'll be honest. The applications came in October 1st, or by October 1st, and I was a little concerned with doing a budget presentation at the time. Um, so, um, I haven't reviewed them, but based on the conversations that I've had with Jen and kind of where, um, we were at, um, I don't really have any concerns, um, or red flags at this time. You know, the only, you know, red flags that I'd have would be, you know, if we had applica- you know, applications that were over our allotment of the amount of money that we had to award out, but we're not at that point yet. We did receive a lot of applications. I can recall a few that came in that I kind of, you know, I questioned on initial surface whether they met the criteria, but I haven't read them enough to know where they fit. Um, so we just have to go through that process, and it just was unfortunate timing that by the time we were talking about the process at the committee level, we got in a place so that people could apply October 1st, and now we're in the middle of a budget process. It's just, you know, unfortunate timing. But I, if you're asking me, do I see any red flags right now of why that could be not, why it would not be funded? I don't, not necessarily at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Somebody else? Supervisor Lattick.
I have one additional comment, thank you. Um, this is my fifth budget process, uh, since I've been on the board. And there's only been one other time when we've really had an amendment to the budgets. I got to give kudos to the, our finance director, the county executive, all the department heads, sheriff and who was ever involved in budgets, because I think our budgets are, have been rock solid. And it's a really good thing when, year after year, we can come here and we can approve it without any amendments. Um, the sheriff had proposed two additional, um, officers this past, um, currently this year. One was communications officer and one was the drug officer. I felt very strongly we should have another drug officer in Portage County. So the communications officer got approved. I had considered trying to make a budget amendment for that, although I've got trouble for that in the past. Um, but we've been assured that there is a cap's grant coming back starting January 1st. So we're actually going to just, instead of making a budget amendment, we're going to wait for that, see how the grant process, uh, and award comes through. And if it doesn't, then we'll deal with that at a later date. So, um, my two cents.
Supervisor Sislavich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, listening to all this, um, it's a lot to take in, and I am in a position here to do what makes sense for the residents of this county. I'm not against monitoring wells at all, um, but we, there's a sense of urgency from everybody in Nelsonville, and, um, I get it, I really do. But the tenure here of five years, uh, to wait, and then what happens after we get some data, it's maybe three to five years, we still have nitrates in our, in our wells. Why aren't we attacking the problem? And let's get some, let's, let's turn our pages to get into new wells, okay? So we have 15 new wells that were just drilled. Um, and if I'm under the, the correct understanding, uh, not one well is over three parts per million in the last 15 wells. So where are those wells drilled? I want to know that. I want to know how deep those wells are drilled. There's some, there's some statistics there that nobody's brought up. So, so that hopefully comes- So that hopefully comes forth there. As far as opening a can of worms, as far as other municipalities wanting money that we fund here, we're unhooked for that. Because you did it for them, why can't you do it for us? So if we're going to drill some wells, I want to use the ARPA funds for that. And do we need all seven wells? And as far as I'm concerned there, I talked to some landowners in Nelsonville. Some of them are not in agreement of putting mine on their property. So with that going said, if we approve this, where are these wells going to go to? There's a lot of caveats down the road, but the thing I'm looking for, I guess that's what I got to say. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think in order to help kind of ease some of the questions that Supervisor Keller had, and is there any doubt or red flags here? I do have a couple examples. I mean, over the past six years that I've been on the board, I've seen the process and the, kind of the obfuscation of process that the Law Con Committee has taken. And it's put an incredible amount of, I should say, I've realized that the people of Nelsonville have an incredible amount of distrust in the process and the confidence that that committee is going to uphold what they say they're going to do or do anything at all. Another example of reasons why I'm concerned about the funding of this in the future is that I myself introduced a resolution to the Executive Operations Committee to have a seventh member be added to the Law Con Committee.
In order, Mr. Chair, how's this germane to the topic?
Yeah, that was predictable.
Well, I'm curious, too, we're talking about the budget, now we're talking about executive ops.
Of red flags, because the question was brought up of what red flags do we have? I brought up having a seventh member from HHS put onto the Law Con Committee to break the tie votes that always happen there. That motion was never given a second, and we did not get to discuss it. And the people of Nelsonville, again, were not allowed to speak their mind and share their story. And then we have the incident at last week's Finance Committee meeting where amendment was made in an effort to provide due diligence. And I think Supervisor presented it out of respect to the committee to have some discussion on this and why we should have this amendment. And the Finance Committee punted. There was not even a motion made to discuss this. And once again, the people of Nelsonville were not allowed to speak to another committee that could have some bearing on which direction our county moves forward. So the seeds of doubt have been sown. It is highly, I am highly skeptical that we are going to move forward with this, with the SLRF money. I hope we do, and if we do, I will eat crow. I have no problem admitting when I'm wrong. But we have too much evidence in our decision-making process that says that we may not do this or we'll find an excuse of why we cannot do it again. The people of Nelsonville have been asking politely and respectfully for as long as I've been on the board and maybe even longer, in a little bit of help in addressing this. We have the opportunity to ensure it tonight. And again, we can use that money, once it's approved, through the Finance Committee to basically reimburse ourselves with SLRF money. So I urge all to accept this amendment tonight. Thank you.
Supervisor Peterson, you have one minute.
I have a little bit, he says six years. Yes, I've been on for five months. We have passed funds or passed the monitoring wells. We have offered RO systems. In five months, we have been moving forward on this. Yes, in my learning on how to run a meeting, there was some things that were, I guess, left out. But we're trying to listen to people. And then I've got, while these meetings are running quite long, we got to do this. So that's my two cents worth on that.
Supervisor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I keep hearing this distinction suggested that it would be okay to spend this money if it's ARPA money. But it's not okay if it's coming from a different source. And again, just to confirm my understanding, Director Josie, is that at this point, ARPA money, the county controls it. So again, subject to some requirements and the performance period that it has to be spent in, this is our money, correct?
Correct. The state and local fiscal recovery funds program money is to the, to Portage County. I think some of the stipulations of the uses of funds allow for things that might be expanded from what we typically would spend money on. You know, they're not kind of, they were, some of the uses are intended for economic recovery kinds of initiatives that would, are unique to that particular pot of money that wouldn't normally be county kind of initiatives. So I think that might be the distinction, but it is Portage County money. Portage County decides. Portage County's passed some resolutions. Portage County has set up a process. It's all driven by Portage County as long as it meets the criteria.
Supervisor Splinter.
Following up with that. If it is our money, the ARPA funds, why couldn't this body as a whole, right now?
It's not on the agenda, we can't write.
Okay, so next meeting. I don't care what the process is as far as holding off, but we could, at the next meeting, vote on it that we want the ARPA funds to take care of this bill as a whole. So if it's not our money, then we can't do that. But if it is our money, why can't we do that at the next meeting?
Jen.
This body and the Finance Committee advised on a process of how to handle those funds. If you start doing this for this project, what are you going to do for all the other projects that have submitted? And why are you going to treat this project different than everybody else? Do you want to open that can of worms? I don't want to be at the meeting.
Supervisor Barry. Ah, Matt Jakowski. Did you two switch seats? I don't know why it is.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Multiple members of this board have defamed the Law Con Committee multiple times this evening. Which is not germane to this topic because this has nothing to do with the Law Con Committee. This is a Finance Committee issue. This is a Budget Committee issue. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Finance Committee, excuse me.
Supervisor Jakowski. Jan Kowski.
We have a policy and a procedure in place. We should be following that, and following it is where we should go.
I am torn. I know this is a, this is an acceptable path to go down with having this in capital. I know that we have the application and we are sending it through for the ARPA money. I have had a conversation with the Finance Director that we need to get that before the Finance Committee sooner than later so that we can resolve this issue. I would love nothing better than to see someone eat crow. I would encourage Finance Committee to approve it. And I do believe with everything that I've heard, both here tonight and/or from other supervisors, that that will happen. And I would, I would love to see that come before us and be taken care of and put this to bed and have us moving on to, not to say that this is an important issue, but we do have many other important issues as well. We spent a lot of time on this issue tonight. The way my mind works, there's a lot of clutter and a lot of squirrels running around in there, but I try and break things down as simple as I can. And I try and look at it without an emotion or in as many cases as I can. And in this particular case, I look at this as that we've got the ARPA funds as the application, and that's the way we're going. And that's, that hopefully will be resolved quickly. There will, because of the process and getting the people to drill the wells and all the other things, this is still going to take a while. And once we get through this, I believe that the ARPA funds will more than likely be approved. I won't guarantee it, but I feel very confident that they will. I guess I'm, I look at this body like a stock car. And if it's driven right, goes around the track pretty good. But when it's not driven right, it goes into the wall. And I think sometimes there needs to be more communication or more people under the hood looking at things and talking about it. And we need to find ways of presenting things. I'm not probably excited about the path in order to present it, that this is taken. I wished it was maybe handled a little differently. I, in this particular role, my job not only is to sit up here and lead this, but it's also to try and keep this body together. And it's also the image of Portage County and this body. And when we don't function right or we disagree because some things maybe not rolled out right or presented right and/or there's skeptics in the public or we fan that fire of skepticism are not good things. We need to make sure that we're all working together as a group in whatever we can, in as many ways as we can. But I also feel that I have heard no one here say that they are against the monitoring wells. And I believe that we could sit here and talk about it all night long, and it really doesn't make too much difference if this amendment gets approved and it runs simultaneously. Because I believe that we will have the ARPA funds approved, and it will become a moot point. I've heard Mr. Splinter's comments about Plan A and a Plan B and I, earlier on, had thought in the same path. But when I come in the door, I always try and keep an open mind. And as I have sat here and listened to discussions and conversations and done my due diligence, talked to our Finance Director, taken a few phone calls from people in the public, and I really enjoyed that and told them that I enjoyed it and gave me a lot to think about, having those conversations with those people. Because I encourage the debate and the discussion. And the part about not taking something up on the floor is an acceptable Roberts Rules of Order. It had happened to us on executive ops. And I look back at that and I try and say that I'm a better person and I can learn from it. I look back and say, I wished I would have made a motion or seconded it. Then when it happened at Finance as well, I was actually outside the meeting and I stepped in, and it was, it was already moved on. I wished that it would have taken place there as well. I believe that I've had a conversation with Supervisor Splinter about something coming up, about having the discussion. I believe the discussion is good. I believe the discussion should happen. But at the same time, I want to make sure everybody understands that when you have the discussion and you still don't get to vote, that it's not people not listening, it's people not agreeing. So either the message didn't get sent right or those five people or more didn't agree with your message. So I look at this tonight that it is something that we've debated about a long time. And again, it is an acceptable way of doing it. I've sat in on a lot of finance budgets. Some of us have been here for 20-some years and we've seen, we've seen these budgets and we've seen them quite a mess and quite complicated. And we've actually got it down pretty good. And we've had several of them that have gone through very smooth. And this one I see is no different. We have a small request here, and we're looking at some reassurances there to make sure that this is going to happen. And I believe everybody believes that these monitoring wells should happen. So if there's no other discussion, are you ready for the vote?
Just a sec.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have an amendment. So we're going to vote on the amendment. And the amendment is to add 200, I'm going to just generalize it, $240,000 into the capital budget.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of putting the $240,000 in capital budget? Vote yes, and those opposed, vote no.
We're waiting. Supervisor Splinter? And we'll go ahead and input your votes, Supervisor Oki?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed 13 to 11.
Number seven, resolution for Snowmobile. Oh, I'm sorry. Moving on. So now back to the original budget resolution as amended.
One moment.
If there's no other discussion. Jen?
I just want to point out that on the financial handout, the resolution itself needs to be updated for those dollar amounts that were included. So the total budget dollar amount changes in the resolution. And the levy will not change. And then just as a point of clarification, well, I'll ask after you vote.
Okay. So there's no further discussion. All those in favor of the budget as amended? Vote yes, and those opposed, vote no. And are you ready?
Are we ready?
Yep, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Supervisor Oki?
Yes.
Motion passed 23 to 1.
So I would urge Finance to get this done because I hate to be wrong, so.
I did push the yes button. I realize it reflects that, but I did push the yes button.
We'll make that amendment on our end.
I would appreciate that.
Number seven.
I just, as point of clarification, our intent is to, rather than redo the budget document, would be just to add to the website the amendment that indicates that the total budget changed rather than modify hundreds of pages. So unless the body would have difficulty or issue with that.
Can we debate that?
You can after we're done. So we're good, everybody? All right. Number seven, resolution for Snowmobile Trail Aid 2023 to 2024 season.
This is resolution number 55-2022-2024 submitted by the Park Commission. This resolution authorizes Ryan Rose, Portage County Parks Director, or Rex Runkie, Portage County Trail Coordinator, to act on behalf of the Portage County Park Commission to submit an application to the State of Wisconsin DNR for any financial aid that may be available and to take action to complete the approved projects.
Motion by Supervisor Lattick, second by Supervisor Barry Jakowski. Discussion. Okay. All those in favor, vote yes, and opposed, vote no.
Are we ready?
Yep. I'm getting better at this. I look over to make sure Maria's got it on her screen, so.
Supervisor Oki?
Yes.
Motion passed 24-0.
Number eight, authorization for a 2023 day report contract over $100,000 for Justice Point Inc.
Resolution number 56-2022-2024 submitted by Resolution number 56-2022-2024, submitted by the Judicial General Government Committee. This resolution authorizes the renewal of the contract for day report and intervention services between Portage County Justice Programs Department and Justice Point Incorporated for the calendar year 2023.
Motion by Supervisor Madine, seconded by Supervisor Maresi. Discussion. All those in favor, vote yes, and opposed, no.
Supervisor Oki?
Yes.
Motion passed, 24-0.
Number nine, authorizing a 2022 budget amendments and transfers.
This is resolution number 57-2022-2024, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes specified budget amendments and transfers, and this resolution requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. Discussion. All those in favor, vote yes, and opposed, no.
Supervisor Oki?
Yes.
Motion passed, 24-0.
Number 10, approving and authorizing acceptance of donated funds and a 2022 budget adjustment for new handguns, holsters, red dot sights, and helmet cameras for the Sheriff's Office, Operations Division, and Special Response Team.
This is resolution number 58-2022-2024, submitted by the Finance Committee and Public Safety Emergency Management Committee. This resolution approves and authorizes acceptance of donated funds and a 2022 budget adjustment for the new handguns, holsters, red dot sights, and helmet cameras for the Sheriff's Office, Operations Division, and Special Response Team. This resolution does require a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Pataki, seconded by Supervisor Jankowski. Discussion. Supervisor Maresi.
Just a quick question, is this another anonymous donation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Was it, Sheriff, was it 50,000?
Yes.
We've got quite a few people that are very, very generous in our community, and we're very fortunate, lucky to have them, so. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, vote yes, and opposed, no.
Supervisor Oki?
Yes.
Motion carried, 24-0.
Number 11, approving and authorizing Delta Dental as a voluntary dental insurance plan provider for the Portage County Fringe Benefit Program for 2023 and 2024.
This is resolution number 59-2022-2024, submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution approves and authorizes Delta Dental as the voluntary dental insurance plan provider for the Portage County Fringe Benefit Program for 2023 and 2024.
Motion by Supervisor Dubek, seconded by Supervisor Matt Jakowski. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes, and opposed, no.
Supervisor Oki?
Yes.
Motion passed, 24-0.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Motion by Supervisor Pataki, seconded by Supervisor Sislavich. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you, everybody.